All right. Jeff Gaddman, Chair of the Lacy Planning Commission, calling the March 27, 2024 meeting and planning commission order. First, I'd like to welcome Vanessa Dalby, she may be an Economic Development Director as our guest tonight. Thank you for attending.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Role call, so we've got Judy, Judy. Yeah, she's just got here, awesome. So I think the only ones missing tonight are Elliot and Eddie. Yeah. Yeah, Eddie did email and say he was gonna miss. I'm not sure where Elliot is. So first, we're gonna begin with the land acknowledgement. Daphne, would you please?
I will. We, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Squawley Indian Tribe and Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial, and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of disposition, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of 1854.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. We have approval of the agenda in the March 13 minutes. I would introduce a motion for amendments. Well, motion to approve or motion for amendments. Okay, so Kirian is.
Second.
Okay. All right, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, public comment, we do have a couple of people here, but I would like Ryan to talk about what goes on with the online.
Yep. So we'll start with online stuff first, and then move to the folks that are in the building here. So I don't know if everybody's aware, but there was some public comment that was a little troubling at the, that's putting it mildly, at the Commission on Equity. And so recommendation at this point is to kind of change the procedures for how we take public comment. In the past, the Planning Commission has taken public comment by anybody using the raise hand function on Zoom. We've now required anybody that wants to provide public comment on Zoom has to register two hours prior and then can be brought into the meeting. Tonight, we didn't have, we don't have anybody in the attendees list, nor did we have anybody register. So it's not an issue. We don't really have anybody online tonight, but in the future, just be aware that we'll only be bringing in people that are pre-registered to be able to speak. We're not gonna be using that kind of raise hand function to bring people in any longer. So doing that hopefully will. In registering, you have to provide more information, and hopefully in doing that, it will, you know, maybe deter some of those comments that remain.
Yeah, I did, you know, I mean, my personal comment on that is I think it's a shame that we've got to that point, but we have.
So to encourage, like, people that want to make constructive comments, well, how will we tell people that they need to register a couple hours ahead of time? You know, how will we make the public that wants to contribute productively?
So everybody has to pre-register to be on Zoom. So that's already a requirement. So in order to be on the Zoom, you have to register, and that'll be two hours beforehand. So that'll kind of take care of itself. We also can take public comment at any time written. You know, if it's a letter addressed to the Planning Commission or an email to direct to any of our staff, that's, you know, for the Planning Commission, we'll make sure you get that as well. And so we have also some general department email boxes. We have multiple ways of getting you that written information. So we'll continue to do that as well.
Okay.
Great. So you arrived first, so please, are you gonna comment? Okay, so please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes.
And one thing to mention is, this is the microphone up here in the ceiling, and so make sure you project your voice so that the microphone can hear.
So we received the, we received all of the written public comments.
Right.
That's what I mean. We all received it. Yes, we all received it in email.
Oh, from who?
From, actually from Ryan. We have everybody's comments.
I did?
Yep.
Twice. The big ones I had to replace.
Thank you, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for attending. Okay, do any of our music members have anything to talk about tonight?
Shout out to the city. Their Public Works portal works great. Yeah, I submitted a request, and within a week, a team had gone out there, they couldn't identify the issue or reproduce it. They came back without any interaction, got the issue to happen, fixed the crosswalk within same day, and reported back to me with an update. And then the crossing guards at the school came by and thanked me like I had done. So it seems like that portal's working great.
This is the Lacey words, that's the Lacey words one? Great feedback, thank you.
Yeah. Really streamlined, really simple.
I have experienced similar service from the city before, and it's pretty cool. Okay, any department report tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple items that I'll mention. First of all, at the last meeting, I think Kirian brought up a couple of questions about affordable housing and related to some, a house that I think got purchased in your neighborhood, got remodeled and resold. Rented, okay. And then another question about kind of trail safety related to police chase that Sheriff's Department initiated on some area trails. And I provided some information on the infrastructure requirements around our trails. And so I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any additional questions or that that hopefully answered kind of the question. I don't care, and you brought it up, so I just want to give you the opportunity if I need to provide any more.
Oh, I forget what you call this, the bow? Bowards. Thank you. I understood it to ensure that, you know, it was accessible to people who have to have various type of non-motorized accessible, like, I don't know what you call this, vehicles. I understand that that was. So I appreciate you sending that on so that we could read and understand what was going.
And I'll just mention too, on the trail issue, I do know, and I think I mentioned this in the email, was that there have been discussions at a kind of police management level between our police chief and the sheriff himself about, you know, chases on our trail and, you know, what to do in the future should that occur again. So rest assured that that is not our police department's policy on chasing people. That, from what I understand, our police department won't chase somebody on the trail. So just keep that in mind. That was something that was initiated by the Sheriff's Office and not by our city department.
It was posted widely on social media as well, the entire chase.
Yeah, like a video.
Follow me up on that.
Yeah, and then the other item I was gonna mention is Grant Beck. I think most of you, pretty much all of you know, Grant is, has announced retirement. I don't think, Grant will probably not see the Planning Commission again, but yeah, Grant, as you're aware, came from City of Yelm, had about two weeks of retirement before he got hired back here and then filled in for Rick while Rick was interim city manager. And so it's decided, well, now's the time to really retire. So it looks like by the end of, by the end of April, he'll fully retire again.
Will you wish him our best? I think he was such a, so knowledgeable about everything, and he had such a great way of explaining things and understanding even when our questions didn't make sense, he could figure out the roots of what they were. So I really enjoyed having him part of us, so, but.
Yeah, he was good, yeah.
You know, I had several occasions to work with him when I was in the Assassin's Office, when he was in Yelm. Yeah, he was always so good. So I never got much chance to work with him here, but please do your best.
And that's it for the department report.
Okay, we have no public hearing. We have no new business, so we will go on to old business about draft neighborhood commercial amendments. And Hawnz, it looks like you're up, you're kind of the star of the show around here.
All right. Yeah, so before I jump into this, as part of your guys' packet, you received a staff report and then three different attachments. Those attachments were the public comments that we received typically in writing, but in whatever format they came in, we either tried to paraphrase, summarize to the best of our ability, or give it verbatim if it was a written comment that was provided. So those are all, that was one of the attachments, and they're also numbered, and I'll circle back around to that numbering system a little bit later here. The second attachment was just the draft code that we've been working from. No changes have happened to that to date since the last couple of times that we looked at it, so it's still the same version of the draft code that we've all reviewed in the past. I will note that one of the public comments that we received included its own redlined version of the draft code. That is not our version. That was just a submitted comment. So there was some potential confusion around that. I just wanted to provide that clarity, that that's not necessarily a staff recommendation or ours collectively, but that was one of the comments that was submitted. So that's what that attachment was as part of the public comments packet. And then the last one is the one that I have up on the screen here. I also passed it around, a printed version of it. I will apologize for the location of the staple when it goes landscape. That staple ends up in the wrong corner, and I did not think of that. So we'll be turning pages a little bit differently tonight. But outside of that, you have written comments printed in front of you, but then also up on the screen. The purpose of tonight is really just to go through those, the written comments. The first column here has the comment numbers, so those actually correspond to the public comment that was submitted. So there's that cross tab, so you can kind of compare staff recommendations with which comments kind of address those subjects. And that's gonna be true throughout this packet. So typically, we'll have the comment number and then summary, just high level, what that comment is generally about or what themes were addressed as part of that comment. A lot of times, we'll see the same comment show up a couple different times, so there's a couple different subjects that were addressed with an individual comment, so that's kind of why you might see those show up a couple times. And then you'll have kind of a staff summary of either background or context, and then potential recommendations from the staff on how to respond to those comments or themes that we saw within the comments as a whole. With that, what I might request is that if there are any specific questions you have about the public comments, wait and see till the end, because we have a few of them, to see if those questions are addressed. If they don't, we'll definitely be able to talk about them at that point, but just so we can kind of cruise on through as quickly as possible, because there is quite a lot of content here that we're hoping to get through. Yeah, with that, I might just dive in, if there's any initial other questions that we can cover ahead of time. But the first one, and these aren't really, and these are really just in the order that they were received. There's no really rhyme or reason to when one comment is ahead of the other. So one of the ones that we received early on has to do with the intent state of the neighborhood commercial districts and why it was removed from the proposed draft or the working draft that we have in front of us. And that answer is kind of twofold. There's a citywide effort right now to remove intent statements from our municipal code and keep those within our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan is a visioning document. It's kind of a forward-looking document, whereas our municipal code is how we implement the comprehensive plan. So there is a separation of kind of the vision and aspirational language that we typically find in comprehensive plan versus kind of the on-the-ground operational language that is within a municipal code. So that's one of the reasons that we're seeing that. It's not specific to neighborhood commercial districts by any means, but we do see that playing out here. So that is one of the reasons that the entirety of that intent statement is being potentially or recommended to be removed from the municipal side of the code, if you will. That language, the intent statement does exist within the comprehensive plan and does discuss neighborhood commercial districts. Purely the language is just to remove it at this point.
Where is that? Where in the planning is that? Is there a hyperlink to that and these proposed changes so that we can review that intent statement to make sure it was actually transferred over there? Because I feel like the neighborhood commercial district is its own plan in itself and does deserve a visioning statement clarifying it. But if it's being moved to the overall growth plan, that's fine. I think it just needs to be linked and very visible, because they do get it. If it's disappearing and we don't have that guidance in there that's readily visible for people, they're gonna keep not seeing it, and then we're gonna continue to deal with this. Is that something that's doable?
Yes and no. Our current comprehensive plan was made in 2016. We can hyperlink to the entirety of the document, but it's, individual sections of the document aren't really directly hyperlinkable.
Like a bookmark in a PDF?
Yeah, it's not set up well for that. But what I can say is that we are moving into our 2025 comprehensive plan that is shifting from more of a printable document that hangs out on a shelf to a fully digital version of that. So one of the primary reasons for that is so that everything can be linkable and that we can speak directly to specific sections and elements of the comprehensive plan that we aren't really currently able to do as well as we'd like. So twofold in the sense that we are working in that direction, that's definitely a goal. And with the comprehensive plan update, that's another opportunity to really review those intent statements, not only specific to neighborhood commercial districts, but all of our different zoning districts.
And would you anticipate us addressing that?
So that's the significant portion of the Planning Commission's work plan over the next two years.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was what we had discussed.
So that is definitely something that we recognize. We do hear it. And really, the recommendation here is that there's a better place for that when it's not directly attached to implementable kind of design language. There's a distinction that we're making there.
Yeah, for sure.
To kind of build on that, and I get the future and hyperlinks and everything being digital, is there a way to not lose that now with footnotes, or is that just too dated of a way to reference things? So we don't lose the connection between the thought and the intention?
So I guess my comment to both, both of you would be with, in putting that in context with what Hawnz said, we can include a link to the entire document with a disclaimer that the old document is not digitized. And, but that the future document will be digitized and the link will be more specific to the neighborhood commercial code. Can you do that?
And if I can add just a little piece of context, a lot of this intent, when we talk about what is the intent of the zoning district, and we're thinking about how we apply these standards on a project-specific level. Our current planning team, when they review a project, they don't only look necessarily at the code, they're gonna go back to that comprehensive planning document that we're talking about putting this in and look at the goals and policies and intent when they're reviewing that project. So they're gonna open up that book and review that as well as review the code we're reviewing today. So as long as it exists over there, the hyperlink, I mean, we can do that, but the hyperlink isn't necessary because it's embedded in our process already. It's something we review as we look at projects. It's just the appropriate place for it because it's a policy-level conversation versus nuts and bolts of code that we can actually apply specifically to a project that's a standard.
Yeah, but I think, you know, what Spencer and Judith were referring to is a member of the public shouldn't necessarily know that.
Yep, no, I agree. And this is one of the, and now I'm gonna get outside of our, like, topic here. But as we move into that comprehensive plan, one of the things, one of our goals, is to try to find a plan that's really readable by the public and understandable by the public for that reason. So when we have that conversation in the future, absolutely a good place to go.
Well, sorry, I'm not to belabor this topic, but I think also if it's included in the comprehensive plan, then all of the elements of the comprehensive plan would be considered with that intent versus maybe a singular specific statement of intent relative to this. They would, other things, climate, other things would be considered as well. And so I think it would be a more global review. So I'm thinking as to what you say, just reference, it's here is where it is. We're getting better at it. We'll have a nice quick hyperlink that'll get you closer to it next time.
It's on the agenda. Should be done 2026, whenever that number comes.
There's a lot of things that we'd like to do better about the current condition of our. That we're tracking. But yeah, so our recommendation for that one is no changes to the current draft as it's currently been circulated in an attachment as part of what we've been reviewing. We good on that one? All right. The next one is community sentiment, and this does attach a little bit to just the intent statements. The, there's a couple references to community sentiment, which was one of the things that's included within the currently adopted intent statement for these districts. The city council actually got briefed on this from the Washington City's Insurance Authority, and there was actually a pretty robust conversation on it. And one of the primary takeaways from that is that community sentiment towards individual projects is not a basis for deciding land use issues. So it doesn't, it's actually gone to court many times and it's lost every time. The reason being is that based on, becomes, or runs the risk of becoming a popularity contest for individuals. So you could have the same project come before the community twice, and one gets approved and one doesn't. And that could be potentially more referendum on an individual than a specific application is being proposed. So our recommendation here is, really, the whole point of this update is to capture community sentiment. The whole idea behind updating and revising these codes is that we are better reflecting the community perspectives, views, expressed desires that we've gained through this process and writing that into the code. So anytime that we review a project, that that is part of the review process and is reflected in that decision. So it's really doing it at this level instead of voting on a project every time it comes in and getting some breakdown of popularity, which really just puts us in a murky place that we can't, it won't stand up legally from it. So that's, that's why we come down on that. So our recommendation is not to change the recommendation to remove the intent statement, the community sentiment being a component of that.
Well, I would just like to say, I believe that the process was very thorough. We were comprehensive and diligent in collecting community feedback, and I think we collected feedback from a very variety of sources, a variety of means over a long period of time. And so I feel like we did get a good sentiment from the public, not on a single project, but more globally on the neighborhood commercial. So I felt due diligence was done relative to that, so I feel very confident that where we're at is where I'm happy we are, where we're at, so.
I just have a quick question, because I know the council voted on something late last year or early this year in regards to that. Is that related to this at all? Because I know they changed that process.
Are you talking about removing themselves from the?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's.
I guess what my, let me rephrase that question to make it a simple one. Is this just because the public's not aware that that had happened, and they're still upset because of something that happened prior, and they don't know that these changes have been made? Or am I misinterpreting this?
I think what it is, is that the currently adopted code has some language in it about community sentiment towards a project. And the idea is, the legal basis behind that is, is not legally defendable because you can't just use neighborhood sentiment as to whether or not a project meets the code. You have to use the legal basis for the project, does the project meet the code? So the staff recommendation at this point is to take that language out because it allows for interpretation that could be subject to an appeal that the city might, might lose. And so what the city council has done is they've removed themselves from the land use decision-making process and just have the hearing examiner that now that makes that decision-making process because they've now reduced their liability in the decision-making process by having the hearing examiner take the lead on that. And then, you know, the other part of this is, what was I gonna mention? That we are moving towards, instead of having like, you know, some, the reason it got to the council in the first place was it was a conditional use permit. It was quasi-judicial, and it was required to go to them. We are focusing really on permitted uses. It's either allowed or it's not. And so it gets rid of that discretion as far as whether or not the community sentiment supports it or not. It basically says now it's either allowed or it's not because, as Daphne said, we've gone through now this very robust community-wide process that has identified what should be allowed and what shouldn't.
The problem, so the issue is, if a post development comes up before you and it is legally permissible and will fit the site regulations, you deny that permit, you are open for lawsuit, you're gonna end up losing, and it's, it's just a liability issue that should not be interfered with.
I just wanted to make sure that what happened last fall with the council's decision was coherent with this change is basically what I'm asking.
Are there any other thoughts on that one?
I have a question in terms of the consequences of that being codified in this way. If public opinion doesn't count going forward, haven't we lost the, the intention behind public hearings? If you want, if you want to post that there's something pending, you invite the public to come in and weigh in on their feelings about that, it doesn't sound like it's going to go anywhere.
So it's not the public's feelings, it's whether or not it meets the code. So the conditional use permits were never designed to have the community say whether or not they wanted something. It was to figure out what met the code or didn't. And the condition part of the conditional use permit was the appropriate conditions that should be put on a project to make it comply with the code, based on technical aspects of it. It could be community sentiment at that point, but the question is never asked, should this go here or not? It's allowed by a conditional use permit, right? So the question is not whether or not it's allowed, because it is allowed by a conditional use permit. The question is what conditions apply to the project?
Yeah. Yeah, so, so what, why should the public show up and make comment anymore if we're taking away the, I don't know, the weight that their thoughts bring to this? We heard a lot of people come in and say, over the last year or so, don't cut. We heard a lot of people come in and say over the last year or so, don't cut down any more trees. Don't put high multi-story buildings over my single family home. Don't put more stores in of a certain type. There's a lot of vacant stores already unoccupied. We heard a lot of that feedback about quality of life, people that already live here, that made that commitment to Lacey. And want to have a certain environment for the future. So I'm not sure what, why they can't come anymore and feel like they're having an impact.
So that's why we're updating the code to reflect.
Okay, so then we have to really tighten things more so, right?
Correct, because the idea is, is that we wouldn't be looking at things on a case by case basis anymore, right? You're looking at the code to make sure that it complies, you know, the project complies with the regulations. And so therefore we need to make sure we get the regulations right.
Well, to speaking to your point, I think also um the public's input is important and will be heard by us and other people reviewing the code and putting forth these changes. But it, my concern with that also is how often are we doing that? And are we doing it in a frequency that's good enough to continue to match what the public sentiment is saying? Because this process takes a long time as we're finding, or that I'm finding out, we'll say. So to your point, due to, we are minimizing their voice. We're, we're saying, okay, you can have an impact, but it's in this one small window here. And if you miss that for some reason, then it's hard to be meaningful.
And and it's also trying to prevent the situation where, you know, maybe you're living close to a a little neighborhood market that. The owner is very disagreeable, right? And yeah, nobody really likes that person. And then they come in with a proposal to build a new market which is permitted on that site. And the neighbors pile on because they don't like that person. And and that is something that's very against anything that is in our government.
Yeah, all I've ever heard, sorry, I could just answer that. All I've heard since sitting here in this role is people objecting to removing nature and replacing it with something commercial. Not um an individual, an individual, you know, position against someone or that kind of thing. It's been about preserve, we're supposed to be the tree city. How many times have we heard people come in and comment? More and more trees are going down and the response they get is, oh, that was approved ten years ago. You know, we can't, we can't stop it now. But we are in the now to be able to stop something else from happening.
But I would also say, if you're living in a house in this city, trees were last to build that house. Remember that.
So. I want, I I do believe we've cut, uh, the public has had their voice on this. And I think we need to have some level of realism on this, that each time one area that has some zoning. Where there's somebody that's petitioning to use that zoning, we can't redo the whole entire process each and every time. So we do need to establish what will neighborhood commercials uh zones be? And I think we have to trust that they are gonna be that way based on what we've done over the last year, year and a half, how, two years? Okay, you would know better than me, Hans, but uh the last two years, yeah, it's gonna have to have some staying power for five years, ten years, depending on if something, unless something significantly changes. And that can be frustrating, I think, to public when, when something does come in their backyard or does come to their awareness. But I think we've been really intentional in that process and I absolutely, I think the public comments uh last week or last meeting that we got in these. I have some new thoughts that I'd like to, and we'll get to that, I won't give you them, Hans, before, but I have some new thoughts that we should consider more. But I think we can't each and every time. Take each project and reevaluate the codes based on each project. And that's what we're trying to do, and this, I think, needs to last as code. I don't know, you, Ryan, you'd know better than me how long this will last, you know, five years, ten years, you know, whatever. Um, unless something significant comes in, but um, but I don't think it's realistic for us to do that. And so I think we've, we've listened to the public, that's our job right now. Do we incorporate trees? Do we consider these other things? Do we, do we make changes in the code? Uh, but this might just sense.
I I I had one more thing to. Problem I have with municipal codes is that they just simply can't move with the times. And look at the times how it's changed. You know, you have a a brand new arcade going in across from the old Sizzler, you know, that used to be um a workout place. You know, I can see those popping up everywhere, you know, being the ne- new blockbuster store, right? So, you know, and right next to your neighborhood. Did the municipal code allow it? Absolutely. Can the public sentiment stop it? No, and that's what we're saying here. So I I believe that there should be some sort of outlet for the public to be able to voice their concerns on these ever changing times with new. Vehicles that we can't even predict what's gonna happen.
Yeah, that's a good point, and I think, you know, part of it too, and and Hans will get to this, is some of the the building dimensional standards that really, you know, require a certain building typology. That reflects the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone. So buildings that are pushed up to the street, that are, you know, pedestrian oriented, that are of a certain height, certain, you know, windows that you can see in and out, those kinds of things. Which will drive what the users of those buildings will be over time. And so, you know, because you, as you mentioned, things come and go, Blockbuster is no longer here, um, but something else is.
Did we predict it was even gonna hit, you know? And we even have codes right now.
We have to plan that, you know, this is gonna be that a code that's gonna apply for the next twenty years. And so, you know, those uses need to reflect that. And so that's why I think we're really moving towards this kind of form based code approach where you really focus on the form to make sure that's right. And that the uses in and of themselves have some flexibility, because we don't know what the market for those uses is gonna be for the next ten to twenty years. So, you know, rather than looking at everything on a case by case basis, we're saying, get the buildings right. And then we, you know, those uses will come and go over time.
It still doesn't address, how do we get the public's opinion? Because, you know, just as you said, the, everything we've heard is we're trying to serve the public. You can't please everyone all the time, you just simply can't do that. But the, the public still has to have a voice.
And and they certainly have through this process, so.
They do.
But well, if it's purely municipal versus.
But what we're trying to do is put together a code that takes into consideration what we've heard. And also provides a structure for the future that we can't predict. So we need to be able to take all that information that we got from the public, which is a lot of different things that people are concerned about. And make a, and and help create a code that's flexible enough to meet the needs that people see now. But to be able to build structures that no matter whether it's a blockbuster or a whatever that lives in there. That 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 will. Be able to be fitted to, the code will allow whatever comes in the future to fit into that structure and space.
And and that's the problem, is that you just simply can't predict it.
You can, but you can take, but you can take people's input. And try to make the code and the setbacks and the allowances and whatever as as. Accommodating as possible to what the public sees now. But also understand that we don't know what's gonna go in there in twenty years.
I've heard, I've heard a couple of comments say, we've gotten all this feedback, we have two years of information and feedback. Well, that's for today. So why should anyone else come to a future public meeting and feel their voices?
Because they're gonna come to a public meeting about some new code that's going to be written for something totally different. Because this code, once it's put together, is going to be the code for neighborhood commercial zones.
There, there was language um some years ago that you're talking about here. And there are a lot of people who were opposed to the Meridian Market. Um, put a lot of value on that paragraph that said, fits with the neighborhood, takes into neighborhood um interests and preferences. And it almost feels like that's being pulled out because that was a big anchor that a lot of the protest um hung their, their hopes on. And that's why you got hundreds and hundreds of messages um and and signatures. That were submitted to the city, because everyone felt if they rallied their collective voices, that they could register. Hey, let's let them know, maybe they don't know this doesn't fit with our, our community. Um, but it almost, I'm not sure it's being taken away for the right reason.
I might say that the, there's a lot of new design language that's being added to this draft. Uh, that doesn't currently exist within the adopted code uh as it's written today. Uh, so I think a lot of that design language actually really is in response to that feedback. Unfortunately, there were some hopes and expectations that were attached to the Meridian Market. And it's, it's that distinguishing between this process where that is a fantastic fit for that kind of feedback. And turning out for a specific project that is already consistent with the code. Um, so I think the, making sure that the, what is, whatever's proposed within these districts is consistent with the neighborhoods that they're going into. Now there's a lot more language within the draft that addresses that scenario. And gives us more ability to actually ensure that whatever being, is being proposed is more in line with the neighborhood that it's going into that we didn't historically or previously have. Uh, so I think that from that perspective, we are making a a positive step, at least in the right direction.
I mean, it's, it's government trying to be better, right? And as, as we move along.
Hell know how well that's gone.
Well, you know, government is never gonna be perfect. And it's changing times, changing technology, changing desires, changing dynamics, uh, but we try.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any more discussion on that one? Our recommendation is uh to leave the draft how it is. It's too root, yeah. Moving forward on that one. Um, the next set of comments that we had that came in had to do with uh potential uses. Uh, those types of uses, including things like liquor stores, marijuana, tobacco, guns. Um, and are, those uses are currently permitted within neighborhood commercial districts. Um, they are all uniquely and heavily uh regulated at the state and federal level, which has always been our approach uh to those uses. So there's, while they are at just a high level potentially listed, there's a lot of specific regulations that exist. Um, that would further restrict those that, that I'm not sure that we wanna tackle within this individual district. If at all, that would be more of a city level thing that we'd want to. And each one of those is very different as far as legally what we're allowed to do. Um, there's very specific regulations that exist for each one of those types of uses. Uh, that's already something that we're required to abide by um both at the state and federal levels. That's typically been our city approach as far as how we navigate each one of those types of uses. So even though we're not specifically listing or naming them within this code, that does not say that there aren't. Pretty heavy limitations on when and where and how they can exist uh that has kind of guided our zoning code throughout the city.
So I have to, I've become, this is more of an issue for me. Um, are those regulations at the state and federal level sufficient? That. Because I do think it's concerning that a gun shop could be next to a neighborhood, a marijuana shop, you know, something that sells alcohol. Though we did entertain grocery stores and I understand that, but I think that does create an additional issue. So are those regulations at the state and federal level enough to keep these kinds of businesses away from neighborhoods? Um, because I think, I think I'd feel more comfortable on this one if I knew what those regulations were a little bit, and that's just my ignorance, I'll own that. Um, so, but um, like, what are the regulations like for proximity to schools? It's like, is that like, uh, and so those are kind of, those are specifically articulated at state levels, federal levels?
It's not just federal and state, there's also city ordinances and council of paths.
So what, what are the, could it, could it mirror something like that for schools, you know?
The minimum distance acceptable.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they do exist, uh, we definitely can talk about it. Uh, we already have some adopted language and it's citywide. Uh, so it has to do with those types of limitations, but then also that a language exists at the state level as well. So I think it's pretty, where, where the majority of that language exists. And it is different for each one of these types of uses and other potential uses that you may not want cited near other types of uses. Um. Yeah, there's.
I was just gonna add, I did go through after one of um the, the people came to, to share and request, you know, have you read the code about guns and marijuana and all that? So I went back and I read the code and it, and actually part of it stipulates that if you were to write, to violate the state code about proximity. And disallow gun shops in violation of the state code, that you could actually be sued. And so it's illegal, you can't create stronger code than, than certain levels have already deemed as, as what it is.
Yeah, a lot of our adopted language that we have within the city is within the parameters of what we're legally allowed to do based on those state and federal regulations. And I will say that it is better handled at the city level than in a district by district basis. As far as when we're incorporating that language, we want that to be consistent. And we want those regulations, whether they're limitations or definitions, whatever, they have to have one section in our code. Where it's consistently referenced everywhere instead of just kind of piecemeal throughout different districts.
I didn't follow that, I'm not, I wasn't understanding how, what you were meaning by that. So like neighborhood commercial versus this other kind of zoning, so you're saying at the higher level. So not getting to the specificity of it in neighborhood commercial, but we have these.
We have a citywide ordinance about the distance, you can have a gun shop from a school, from a this, from a there. And it mirrors whatever the state or federal regulation is, because you can't be any more stringent.
Like maybe next, by next meeting, can we just, maybe it, is that brief enough? Or could we get a, could we get kind of a summary of what that is? I don't need ten pages of code, please, because I will be able to read it or understand it. But I, I would trust you to kind of summarize it for us or something, but I think.
We can definitely do that, each one of these, even the items that are listed here, each one of those is uniquely different too. So depending on, there are a whole host of uses and each one of them is uniquely defined with unique definitions and regulations and. Limitations on when and where and how they can exist. So we can definitely do that. Um, I don't have all that information for you today, uh, but that is.
I didn't expect you to read my mind.
I'm seriously envisioning this conversation's gonna go well in the next meeting, so yeah.
Yeah, so.
I, I have one question.
Yeah.
Just super, just to, just to, because I think, having had a discussion about that, making that discussion, being recorded, be part of the minutes. I think that is gonna go a long way in making sure that we've done our, uh, done what we've um, uh, listened to the, the public and incorporated that and considered that. And I think that, that would be a very positive, even if it makes no changes in the code, I just, having had an overt discussion on it, I think would be.
I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, not to stray too far outside our, our scope here, but does um, just anecdotally, we always see in the news that how the marijuana stores are victims of these um robberies. Where they drive vehicles into them because they can't, they can't, you know, do banking, they have to have all that cash and they're very vulnerable in that way. Does our um police force get to weigh in on any of the thoughts around where marijuana shops are? Because it'll take resources from them to kind of guard these places?
They do, they give input into the city council's decision.
Yeah.
City doesn't have a specific ordinance on marijuana. Um, so we, we used to when it was the dispensaries, now that it's state regulated and it's no longer under local control, we go by the, the state liquor cannabis board regulations. Which has specific requirements around certain land uses. Um, and so there's only certain areas of the city that um marijuana shops can go. When those are getting licensed, just like if you were to get a liquor license, there's an application made to the liquor control, liquor cannabis, cannabis board, it used to be a liquor controller. Um, liquor cannabis board that basically is then sent to the local jurisdiction, the local jurisdiction routes it throughout our, throughout city hall for comments. And so as part of that, those comments are made back to liquor cannabis board in their decision making on whether or not to give somebody a license.
Because it can be a tremendous drain on resources diverting the police, right, to responding to that or attracting crime to those kind of places. Thank you.
And whenever one of those licenses is applied for, the property has to be posted for public notice. So the public has enough community to hear comments.
Okay, anyone else, anything else on that one? We're gonna come back with some summary kind of definitions on a few of those and what those regulations actually look like. Um, next one is gas stations, uh, so. Okay, I can scroll here on the screen as well.
Sometimes if they're open too long, they disappear, you have to reopen the PDM.
Why don't you stop sharing and I'll, I'll bring up the agenda.
Okay.
Go ahead and just skip, give your. Section, I'll bring it up here.
Okay, so it'll be up on the screen shortly, but it is in front of all of you. Um. Um, we did receive uh some gas station specific comments. Some of those were general and some of those had to do with their proximity to specific uses, so those uses and. Including uh things like parks, schools and homes in general, so this is a summary section of a lot of the different types of comments that we received. Uh, I did copy the current draft language uh within this section just for reference for this discussion. Um. Yeah, so our staff recommendation is that, and if you'll recall, we did go through that kind of one mile, one point five mile radius exercise. And we looked at each one of these districts and what was possible based on uh current conditions. And then we compared that with what was being proposed as far as our draft code, so we went through that exercise. Uh, so our staff recommendation on this one uh is to maintain that uh one point five mile radius that we kind of went through. Um. A potential alternative could be to prohibit standalone gas stations. This, instead of kind of trying to get deeper into the weeds and defining potential scenarios that we're, you know, guessing in the future of what, how that might play out. But at this point, instead of adding, trying to add more code that kind of guesses at the future. Uh, at this point, I think that we are pretty restrictive in what that language is, but if we want to take it further as far as further restricting that. Uh, I think the best course would be to just uh prohibit those standalone uses. So those are kind of the two options that we provided, but if there's discussion or thoughts on that, uh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna ask questions if I have a. Hans, if I recall, by using this mileage thing, none of these would qualify to have gas stations. Why don't we just say no gas stations? I I I think we're, if if the practicality of this is what that's gonna be. Um, I think. You know, having words or steady mileage or something, and and I understand that we can't read the future and such like that, and this is twenty year code or something like that. But um, I can get behind that, I think, yeah.
Didn't we initially get into this discussion about having gas stations at all? Because we got into the grocery store discussion of some grocery stores will not go to a location if they cannot have a gas station. I think that was where we started, but I'm fine with saying no gas stations.
Well, and then the the bit about the grocery store is there were a lot of public comments about the trucks and such like that. And so if we're allowing a grocery store of the size, that's gonna necessitate a gas station or want a gas station like a Safeway or Fred Meyer. I think we're getting into the truck issue and I think we're, I think we're getting into some other issues that were concerned to the public, so I don't know, I'm just.
That stops it in its tracks.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just, I know I'm kind of maybe singing a different tune a little bit, but.
So if we say no gas station, what does that do to the ones that are already currently in that district?
So we do have a vested application that has a a land use approval um that essentially would become a. A nonconforming use, so at that point it becomes a grandfathered use, so it it really doesn't affect the one that has been permitted. It just affects the future ones from being able to be constructed.
So then explain what happens if an existing facility experiences a fire or earthquake damage.
Right, so they've got eighteen months to build, to rebuild at in its current configuration. If it was to be damaged in a fire or something like that, so there is a a reestablishment provision in our code. That even if it's a um, you know, a use that's no longer permitted in that zone, that there um, they have eighteen months to to rebuild. And in the current configuration, so for example, we do have the, I always want to call it the Ruddle Road General Store because that's what I grew up. It was called, um, but at Ruddle and Yelm Highway, the the Chevron Station there, there is a gas station there, right? And that's that's the only word commercial, so we do have existing facilities in neighborhood commercial areas as as well. They would basically immediately, they would not be able to expand, they would, you know, only be allowed to operate in their current configuration and if something was to happen, they could only rebuild. Within an eighteen month period in that current configuration.
So I'm hearing consensus to not allow standing.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just a little bit confused and and I'm not poo-pooing on this, I just wanted to recall something that we were told. That even if they were to sell the station, then they are, there was something that people were saying that. It would go away, and I don't even know if that really matters, but.
No, essentially the the only thing that really ever goes away is if the use is is. If the, if it ceases to be used for eighteen months, if they go out of business and nobody's located there for eighteen months, then they they lose that. That ability to reopen, essentially to reestablish that use, so there's.
Does that clock start for a business? What's the beginning and end of the eighteen month clock?
Um, when the use ceases, I guess, that's kind of the, that, I mean, I, it, that's a little vague, I know, but um, you know, we're not out there with a stopwatch either.
Is it the filing of some document or?
That's what Kate, that's what case law says, so legal challenges in court is when the use ceases. So every case, we would end up with an individual analysis on when it actually closed. A lot of documents are used, like maybe a business license, for example.
Land use has always been that when a use, like, somebody locks the door. And walks away on November first, that's when the clock, court says the clock started. Fire happens on, you know, September twentieth, that's when the clock starts. Courts have been very, very consistent in. I think we could just.
Yeah, so this is the planning commission's recommendation. Um. We're providing some serious alternatives, but it is definitely up to you guys to pick and choose or rephrase or.
I just meant about the formality, do we need to make a motion to make that change, cuz it seems like we're pretty much in agreement here.
I did want to get one point of clarity, um, so there's standalone gas stations as a standalone use, and then there's also as an accessory use to a grocery store. Putting that out there to you guys, do, is there a distinction you want to make, is there any?
I would say there definitely was a consensus on standalone. What does everybody feel about the, in conjunction with the use of the grocery store?
I would still say no, because they could define grocery by having a a little stand out there that holds three shelves of potato chips. And then say that they sell food.
No, so we have language, though, it.
I wouldn't want to give them any loophole, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I think we have plenty of gas stations.
There was that one letter from the um, the community that represented many HOAs. That did say that the the most important thing for them was getting a grocery store, and so. I can't recall specifically if they identified one particular type of grocery store, but I know like Trader Joe's, something like that.
Trader Joe's or Whole Foods essentially, yeah.
There isn't enough square footage to build a Safeway.
I think that was the consensus of our discussion before, was that no larger organization's gonna come in because they just can't meet those footprints, is that correct? Okay, so then we can just kind of proceed to just ban them and outright, and just be done with it?
Yeah, I think so.
I I think that's.
And I think that goes better with the intent of neighborhood, neighborhood commercial districts as well. And if, even if they did have the space to be able to do it, maybe the appropriate venue is to do a rezone and actually. Rezone that site to something like community commercial or something like that, that's more reflective of what that zone is for. Community commercial is more regional, like a, like a grocery store.
Right.
Neighborhood commercial is, I guess, as it's, you know, title is, is really neighborhood oriented, and so you want a neighborhood scale grocery, right? And that usually that doesn't include gas, and I think that's the, you know, summary of what I'm hearing. Yeah.
Honestly, if if we don't allow the gas in conjunction with the grocery store, we're much more likely to attract something like a Spuds. Yeah.
The only caution that I have, and and I agree with all of this conversation, but the only caution is we've got, this is twenty year code kind of thing. And so we're envisioning the Safeway or the Fred Meyer gas station, and that may not be the reality of what those businesses look like in fifteen years. So I I agree with where we're going, but I don't think we want to overuse, you know, I love Spuds, you know, it's a great store. And I'd love one close to my house, but you know, there may be something different in ten or fifteen years, and so we've got it.
A different kind of store.
Yeah, we need to think future, and and maybe that's not what people want at that point in time, maybe everybody gets their groceries delivered by that time and doesn't, you know, I don't know. Um, so I think we need to be careful about envisioning what we want based on a current retail aspect, so.
I think what I'm hearing from it's not necessarily about what we want, but what we don't want. And I think that's what I heard in the public comments as well, that we read in the public comments.
And this is an example of consideration of the public opinion.
Right?
Okay, sounds like consensus on that one. Um, and it's, and I'll rephrase that from standalone to just gas stations, but.
It's, I I just want to make sure that, like, does anybody disagree, just because I I think it's important that, you know, there are some of us like myself that are. Maybe just willing to voice their opinion more, but I just want to make sure that we're comfortable that somebody doesn't have a different opinion.
I guess that would be me, because I I used to service a lot of corporate buildings and a lot of corporate buildings. Um, the only consideration that they had was to make sure that they had a fueling station on their property. Is that a, um, something that they would not be able to install because of this code with no gas stations?
What scale of property was that when you experienced?
Well, you're talking warehouses and et cetera.
Right, you're not, you're not talking a thirty thousand square foot grocery store.
Or Starbucks.
Yeah, you're talking a sixty thousand square foot grocery store that has room for fueling stations.
No, what what I'm talking about is uh the corporate would be, they need to be able to fuel their trucks onsite. So that their their drivers have access to fuel and get nighttime, et cetera, as they get in, go out, et cetera. Uh, I worked for Granger and dealt with the.
I think Granger.
Yeah, yeah, I think the neighborhood commercials were kind of concluding those.
Yeah, we're not making a distribution center.
Right.
Could it be no public gas stations, though, to to a point where somebody may want to have?
I, I'm, what I'm hearing is what prohibit gas stations and and um, I think in Elliot's case, I think you're talking about something that is more. Um, for like a light industrial facility that would not meet the intent of neighborhood commercial, so at this point, I think it's taken care of.
All right.
So that wouldn't be restricted.
It would not be allowed, um, because we, it it, you know, those those types of facilities wouldn't even be able to go in these locations in the first place. Um, you know, a warehouse, for example, would not be able to go here.
Okay, yeah, if we can keep moving, it sounded like the roast. Uh, the next question, yeah, it's up there, okay, had to do with the housing of individuals. Uh, with treatment or court ordered supervision. Uh. In our code today, uh, we try to, some of that's defined under residential care facilities. Trying to interpret what that comment was asking about versus what that comment was spelling out. Um. Residential care facilities are something that's allowed in all of our residential districts. Uh, and any district that allows residential uses or mixed uses, including our neighborhood commercial districts. It's covered under a separate set of codes. Um, and again, it's one of those things we address in one location and then apply it across all of our districts. So whether or not it's allowed within neighborhood commercial districts, if the concern is that proximity to residential districts, that's something that's permitted in all of our residential districts. So our recommendation there is to not change anything within the neighborhood commercial districts. Any thoughts or comments on that one?
Could you educate us on um, what what level of, I guess it's an offender, someone who's court ordered to be in. What what level of um, person would be allowed to be in these residential areas?
Yeah, so we have our own code and then depending on what level of offense or what that is, that at some point actually does kick up into the state and federal level again. So there are additional regulations there. Um, we've designed and written our code with that in mind, uh, I'm not gonna be able to cite it to you right now, but um. That thought process did go into the formation of that code and that does encompass all of our districts. Uh, to the extent that we're legally allowed to do it, in some cases, again, there's restrictions on how far we can go with our code.
But literally, it could be, if I'm in these, uh, the neighborhood, near a neighborhood commercial district, the house next to me be, could become this.
Exactly.
So, so yes, the neighborhood commercial district, if if it fit, could do that, but the house next to me also could, so.
Anything that's residential.
And that's again more.
Residential.
Yeah.
Do you currently allow, I'm sorry, do you currently allow, you know, sex offenders to live in residential homes?
So I'll I'll go through the list here, uh, it says the list, this is what uh. Includes but not limited to residential treatment facilities for psychiatrically impaired children and youth. Uh, adult residential rehabilitation centers, private adult treatment homes, alcoholism treatment facilities, congregate care facilities. Valuation and treatment facilities for group training, uh, group training home, uh, group care facilities and foster family homes. Um, and you know, my, so it's a, it's a lot of detail behind each one of those, I'm sure. Um, but you know, what our experience is, is that these things are more likely to happen in a single family home than they would in any kind of multifamily situation. So you know, if we're looking at, you know, a a situation where you have, you know, a mixed use or something like that, where you have, you know, units for rent. People aren't renting out units for these types of facilities, it's an entire home uh that's being used for this in in neighborhoods. And those are neighborhoods that are, you know, across the community, so. So, and the state has basically taken a stance that we can't preclude these, you know, we have to allow, allow for.
Does it have to be, I'm sorry, does it have to be disclosed publicly?
There are state level requirements on when and where and how those disposers are made.
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah.
I I see these being very popular down in California when I was based down there for a while. And one of the problems was that they, these homes, they go in and got the home, make it ten bedrooms. So that it involved a huge amount of traffic in that one home, so it's causing a lot of problems for the neighbors. Because of parking, you know, you've got the nurses, the occasional doctor, the visitors for the residents, et cetera. Is there a way to address that?
There's a whole set of regulations on family homes and care homes.
Right.
Huge, huge state inspections and all of that stuff.
The state has precluded local municipalities from regulating a lot of this.
Not an issue for neighborhood commercial, this isn't, this isn't anywhere part of this, this is not to hold separate.
So there are gonna be quite a few comments in here that are maybe not best addressed within neighborhood commercial districts. Or don't directly apply to neighborhood commercial districts. Um, this to us felt like one of those. Um, so I am gonna present all, everything that was received and we are gonna discuss it, but some of them. Whether or not it's a valid comment or not, and maybe it should be addressed somewhere else, it's just not not necessarily a conversation that we should be having specific to these districts.
Thank you for being so comprehensive and transparent about it, I appreciate that.
No, that's, that's what we're here to do, so. Um, project vesting is the next one, and actually this falls into that category as well. Um, we do have development guidelines and public work standards that go in depth into project vesting and how that is. Given it was a comment that was received, so it is here in front of you today, but again, none of our districts individually addressed this, that is a higher level. Well, uh, set of regulations that encompasses all of our zoning districts, so not best addressed within neighborhood commercial districts is our recommendation there. Um, so yeah, the next one is Marvin Road congestion. Um, there were quite a few different comments that came in on this one. Um. Some of the uh primary language that uh within our comprehensive plan, and I actually put it in italics here. Um, one of the, one of the descriptions of these districts is that they retain strategic sites for neighborhood commercial activities. Providing neighborhood commercial activities within walking distance of all neighborhood commercial areas. One of the other primary elements of these is that it's primarily either foot traffic or drive by traffic, so traffic that's already existing on the roadway. They're not generation, they're not primary trip generators, so people aren't driving specifically to the, those when they weren't already traveling somewhere. Is is basically what that means, so we recognize that there's definitely a lot of congestion on Marvin Way. Um, these districts actually, if implemented correctly. Have the potential to reduce that traffic by reducing the number of people that are actually traveling through those more tightly congested districts. Towards the freeway and farther along Martin Way. Um, so our recommendation there is that there are no uh changes to the code. Um, if anything, these districts actually have the potential to improve those conditions over current standards, not worsen them, so. I will also say, sorry, um, from this point forward, the ma- vast majority of the comments all are really specific to that Marvin, uh, Forty First and Marvin Way. Um, those first few are a little bit more general, but moving forward, the remainder of the comments really are central around that that district. So keep that in mind when we're having these discussions, that those are really specific to that district and not necessarily something that was a. A comprehensive comment across all of our districts, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, completely kind of changing gears with parking, has the city council provided any sort of guidance on? What parking should look like in the future going forward, cuz there was references to on-street parking as well as additional requirements, and I've been kind of going down the rabbit hole. City parking requirements, but there's not a lot of places in the city where great examples of street parking. Um, stand out to me outside of neighborhoods, so is there some example that you can point me to so I can envision like what is their vision for this? Or what is our current status for that?
Or what is our current status for that? Because I'm kind of just.
I might catch that one. We do have comments coming up both for and against parking in general. So, uh, we will get there, but I might stick with this one right now and then we'll get there when we get there.
Got it.
Could I suggest, or is it reasonable to suggest Hans, that this congestion, I think it's by the comments, it's a huge issue and a, and a growing issue, but I think it's a separate issue because the congestion is from situations that are already existing along Marvin Road. So maybe this is something that we consider for future for planning, um, you not, and I don't know whether that's planning commission or public works or something like that, but I think there was a lot of good feedback relative to this and a lot of, uh, 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 public comments. And, um, I don't think that should have been lost just because it doesn't apply to neighborhood commercial and maybe we send that someplace else for consideration on doing something.
I definitely agree. Uh, we've received a very large amount of comments specific to, uh, congestion and just availability of roads and accidents and speeding and all that, um, through this process. And one of the things that we struggled with as far as messaging is things that are specific to these districts versus broader more, uh, far reaching concerns. And we actually created a presentation and a lot of, uh, pullouts of that public comment that were specific to that kind of concern and shared that with public works and transportation. So. While it's not necessarily specific to neighborhood commercial districts, we recognize that it is a bigger issue. Uh, we are relaying that to other departments or those that are kind of making those decisions when we get that type of feedback. So it's not necessarily something that we shared with you, but we did actually walk through a lot of that feedback with transportation department.
And I'd like to also add that a lot of the congestion on Marvin Road, especially with trucks, is the state of Washington's fault. Because when that campus was built by, developed by a warehouse, there was a plan with it, with a tight timeline, I would say, Washington to do an on and off ramp at Marvin Road. So BFO, when they built their first warehouse out there, specifically cited there and incorporated twenty million dollars in additional road improvements that they didn't have to do. The idea of having that on and off ramp there. After that was built, the state said, eh, I don't even want to build there. And so that's why, you know, yes, that development was approved, but it was kind of with the idea that the state was going to fulfill their part and they didn't.
And, and just keep in mind that the, the grid, uh, is not fully built out in Hawks Prairie and, and the idea, you know, is that at some point that the traffic will be better dispersed and not funneled all on Marvin Road. Right now, you have all of Johnson Point funneling to Marvin Road and that includes everything, you know, out Johnson Point to Jubilee, to the warehouses and everything in between. And so, you know, and keep in mind that, that, that grid hasn't been built out. There are hopefully someday, maybe in our lifetimes, we'll see another interchange out there, which will take the pressure off of the Mar- Marvin Road interchange. But, you know, um, some of these things are, are beyond our ability, as Hans said, to address them through neighborhood commercial code update, so.
Yeah, our recommendation there is that nothing in the draft proposal really uh, speaks to this other in that it has the potential to actually improve it to some degree by lessening the larger longer trips that are funneling through those zones that we specifically have heard about.
Or sideline point, is there a way to draft beautification of Martin Way? It's always been pretty much the ugliest part of the city.
So that would have more to do with our transportation, uh, element of our comprehensive plan and uh, higher level, uh, regulations that are more city encompassing than neighborhood commercial specific.
I was thinking along the terms of when you allow these multifamilies to go in, that they they have to put in trees in the front or, you know, we are a tree city. To, to incorporate that as part of the code. Is that out there or is that?
To a degree that exists. So whenever a development comes into a new lot, there are site improvements that they are required to do. Uh, so you don't typically see those on empty lots. Uh, that is completed or accomplished at the time of development. Um, but those are requirements that do exist, uh, currently within our code today and would be implemented if a site were to be developed. So a lot of the examples that you're probably referencing are places that have been developed and those are typically done in conjunction with whatever that site development is, that's adjacent to that piece of property.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things too, I might just suggest is that, you know, these types of conversations are really good for things like the bus tour, um, that we do, you know, um, pointing out, you know, successful projects and seeing things in action and being able to, you know, have discussions between yourselves and council members and staff about, you know, what you're seeing, what you like and what you don't like and, and how we can address that through code updates. So keep that in mind too, that there's other ways to be able to achieve that.
We need bus tours twice.
Really educational.
Love those.
So I might, I might see if we can keep moving on here, cause we still got a healthy amount of this left. Um, next one is, and I put parentheses around this, cause we hear both. So this one is in favor of increased housing flexibility and horizontal mixed use. Um, so, and I essentially provided this comment twice, but the, the comment or the staff comment assessment here is that uh, we are creating increased residential flexibility, but we are tying that to commercial uses. Um, we did actually have a revision in our staff, uh, staff recommendation instead of no changes. We actually want to ensure that the commercial component is tied to the first phase of any site development. So we aren't quite specific on, on that, uh, within our draft language, but we just want to get a little bit more specific that uh, residential, yes, is permitted, providing commercial, uh, is construct onsite, but we want to make sure that that commercial is a, the first phase of any project, not a last phase or an afterthought or something's pushed down the line. So mostly the same, but just getting into language of phasing. Um, any thoughts, comments on that?
Is this based on your experience that they don't follow through on their original promises?
Yep. It is. So we want to be a little bit stronger on that point if we can.
So I, I just want to do a time check right now, we're seven fifteen. Uh, my intent is to adjourn at eight, you know, wherever we're at in this discussion and we'll continue that at our.
Good on that one? Okay, uh, next one is similar to this. So these two, the uh, comments five and thirty-five are two developers that showed up. Um, so these, these comments are kind of linked to each other in that sense, as far as what they have to do with, um. But again, this one is asking for reduction in commercial square foot requirements. Our feedback here is that these are commercial districts first and foremost. Uh, if they want to pursue that, there's always a rezon pathway that they can pursue if that is more in line with what they're looking to do. Um, so our recommendation is no changes there. We did develop an alternative, but depending on where you're all at, our recommendation is that these are first and foremost commercial sites. Good on that one?
So just one simple question. But, um, the feedback is really about, um, if I am, if I'm allocating the feedback correctly, but really about the cost effectiveness and, and design and things like that with the sizes that they were wanting and such. And I think that's looking at now versus long range kind of thing a little bit, isn't it? Or am I?
The, the sizes they were wanting, sorry.
Never mind, I'll just.
There's a future one about building sizes coming up.
Oh, okay.
Something to look forward to. But if we don't address it, let me know.
I, I'm sure we will, so.
Um, next one has to do with affordable housing, uh, requirement. So this was something that was, uh, I believe council at one of our work sessions actually asked about this. Um, these comments are against affordable housing. Um, and that's again, with that parentheses is there. Um, but, uh, when we're kind of looking at the language surrounding residential uses on these districts and talking about, uh, standalone residential uses and ground floor residential uses, um, there was a discussion at the council level that there's an opportunity to incorporate some level of affordability requirements as part of these districts. Uh, the feedback that we heard within the comments is that these are better addressed at the city level. Uh, and not necessarily at the district level. Uh, things like the my family tax exemption, which is a designation that we do have is a, a tool that really works to address and implement that. Um, so really our recommendation is to address this, uh, a higher city level instead of within these districts. And that way we can actually have a broader impact that may if implemented, actually through extension, address these districts. But again, it's better navigated at the city level comprehensively instead of at an individual, these male district level.
So if, if for instance, we adopt this, no requirement for affordable housing. If the city council were to adopt something that says any future development has to be thirty percent affordable housing.
Correct.
I want some clarification, cause I, I did, um, want to understand that this component better, how they were saying that, uh, it wasn't feasible. And one of the comments back was that, oh, you know, well, we have a three bedroom and someone comes up for affordable housing. And then that person got that house, but they're so it's one person living in a three bedroom and this person only pays three hundred dollars a month. And that's because affordable housing, you can't pay more than thirty percent and this person only earns a thousand dollars. But I went back and I actually read the code and that was kind of the justification I was given that there's no control over who rents and people get to choose however much they want to pay for the housing. But when I read the code, the RCW that was linked, it says that rentals are sixty percent of the median income, which in two thousand, uh, twenty-two was eighty-eight uh, thousand five hundred sixty dollars. And so it had to be affordable housing meant sixty percent of that median income, which is fifty-three thousand dollars. So someone earning fifty-three thousand dollars is what this affordable housing was supposed to accommodate. And so thirty percent of that, the rent would be at like thirteen hundred dollars a month. And so I don't think that, I mean, I, I'm just a little bit confused there, saying that we can't afford to put in a rental that would be at, you know, thirteen twenty-eight a month for a studio or for a one bedroom. Looking at what's going through the state right now, saying that eighty use, if you want forty use, one of them has to be affordable. It seems like saying we're not going to have language about affordable housing is really detrimental because if it's not in the code, people aren't going to do it. And I don't understand how it's impossible to build a unit that is thirteen twenty-eight. And I don't think people can just, I'm thinking about myself. I couldn't just be like, oh, well, my income dropped. I'm not going to pay more than thirty percent of it. That's goes into section eight and government funding to supplement and cover that. It's not like the landlord's going to have to eat that money or that, that, that debt of people aren't paying, from my understanding. And I like, I went back to look at the Washington code and it was, you know, rather sim- similar saying affordable is eighty percent to a hundred twenty percent of the average median income. So, which I think is a little bit ridiculous that over a hundred percent of the AMI is considered affordable. So, but that's, that's saying that someone, they can't afford to build for someone who's earning a hundred six thousand dollars a year. So I'm just looking at the code, I'm trying to understand, just thinking about all the legislation, I know that, that's still something that's being processed by the city, cause there's a lot of stuff coming in there, but is that fear that someone can just come in to a unit that's deemed affordable? That the landlord has no choice about who rents it? And that the person can just pay whatever, like if they're earning zero dollars, they pay zero dollars because zero, zero is thirty percent? Or is it more that they just build rental units that are actually priced at that, you know, thirteen twenty-eight a month? And so that was my clarification because I'm a, a little bit confused about the, the whole rental affordable.
Yeah, so it's based on the area median income, so it's not individual, it's the area average essentially. Uh, and then it's percentage is based off of that, so it's not a, on a per individual basis in that sense. So there is kind of a, uh, way to get at that number that's kind of known in advance of whoever you'd be potentially renting into, so it's not individual in that sense. There are verification steps that need to take place, uh, to ensure that that's still being met. Um, and there is some additional kind of individual review that does need to take place as part of that process. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, it's not talking about a person that makes zero dollars, so zero, sixty percent of zero, yeah, I'm not getting into that.
Yeah, and just also because of the, the multifamily tax exemption, the only place that, that actually exists in Lacey is at Midtown. And these neighborhood commercials are spread out all across Na- uh, Lacey, so it's, it's not just, it's, it's not just at Midtown. And if we're thinking about these, uh, neighborhood commercial where people can actually live and work. So maybe someone who's, who's working in that building at one of those commercial locations can't actually afford to live there, that's removing that walkability element of, you know, that live work community. So it just seems yeah, they're, they're, you know, having other language all over, but I think if it's not there, um, the way the city's going, it's it seems that a lot of people who actually are working in our city can't afford to live here anymore.
So I think what staff is recommending is that's a council decision to be done citywide. Rather than trying to address it at a specific zoning court level.
I will.
Because the, the council is the only one that can declare tax exemption area, but we can't even mandate it in code.
I will say, one of the reasons that also Midtown was identified for that tax exemption is because that's also where our transit center exists. So as far as, uh, from a transportation perspective, there's a lot of additional amenities and resources there that while some of them may exist within these smaller neighborhood commercial districts, um, they're, not all of them are met. So it's, it's not only just the affordability of the house, but it's also the affordability of everything that's around there and getting to and from there. So it's, it's, uh, taking a larger kind of view of all of the different, uh, costs that go into living anywhere. And so that's why Midtown was specifically identified, because it has a lot of those other additional kind of amenities and resources that really do also further work to support, uh, those lower income residential units.
I, I do hear you, but I, I still, it, it, and I do understand putting it to the city as a wider code, but I think that if we can say no gas stations, we can also take a stance and say people deserve to live here. And I think that that's more important than whether you fuel your car or not, whether you can afford to live in a community and where you work. So I, I do hear that people are considering this, but it, it doesn't seem right to remove something that's making Lacey a better place. And people, whether they're earning fifty-three thousand or eighty-eight thousand dollars or less or more, it doesn't make them a bad or, nor an undesirable person. I work in schools and paraprofessionals who've been fighting for living wages. They won't make this much. People who work in our schools, good people, deserve to have affordable home, housing too, so.
What I hear you advocating for is that we keep the code the same that's currently drafted, is that right?
I do believe so. And I think that for a de- developer to, to say that they, it's impossible for them to construct an apartment at thirteen twenty-eight a month. I, I'm pretty sure that there's a way that they could accommodate. I mean, that's not terribly much and it's a very small portion of, of all the units if we're considering. Um, and I know people are opposed to four story buildings, but if we're looking at a, a three or four story building, have a couple of units at that rate.
Did I hear though, are we thinking the multifamily tax exemption is sufficient enough to get to the affordable housing element that we want to in the neighborhood commercial districts? So is it, did I hear that or are, are we just?
There's no requirement that says you must use a multifamily tax exemption. That's an option that developers have. What we're talking about, I think, is modifying the multifamily tax exemption in a couple of ways. One of it would be expand it to other areas of the city outside of Midtown. The other would be that instead of, right now, we have an eight year option for eight year tax exemption if it's a hundred percent market. Um, we also have a twelve year, um, exemption if you do a certain portion affordable. What we would do is we would move to a requirement that said, if you're going to do the multifamily tax exemption, you must use the twelve year um, exemption and therefore put in a certain portion as, as affordable.
So it's sort of optional, this becomes mandatory. Okay, sorry.
What I will say, I, I hear what you're saying, Kieran. Really is very, very difficult for a developer to build it and to offer it. Even thirteen twenty-eight months. And once you get into land acquisition, what they have to do to prepare, building materials, labor. What, what we also want to avoid is creating code where. We're not even gonna attract the type of development we're trying to get here because. Um, that's happened in the past, it's seen many, many times in my life. Sixth Avenue in Lacey is a good example where code was created with really good intent. But developers looked at it and said, nope. And so then you didn't attract the, the development you were looking for.
I'm thinking.
Just writing, right over there.
It wasn't until the zoning code changed that development actually started happening.
I know, it's, it's just, and, and I know people have given up the multifamily. Tax credit because they wanna do what they want to build something that's profitable. And I, I don't know if I said it, but these apartment buildings, we're talking about giving them, you know, uh. Reduced parking requirements and giving them these things and giving them everything to build these things. And a studio apartment is hundreds and hundreds of dollars more to rent a month. Than what I pay in my mortgage for my home. It's, it's. It's, I, 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 I think that housing people needs to come first. I know that we do have, you know. I was looking at all the different ones, what is it? Copperwood, Forest Grove, Magnolia Villa, the Reserve, different affordable housing. Uh, like multifamily housing that we do have, but if we sequester people. Who are at one level of income in one neighborhood. And say, you know, we don't want those people walking our trails. We don't want renters in our community. We don't want, in, in the, the comments that are coming back, it's, it's. It's incredibly disturbing. These are people, these are our neighbors, these are the people that we work with that have kids and families. And so I hear people saying it's too expensive for us to build a unit that rents it. Thirteen hundred a month, but then I say that you're probably doing it wrong. And with code, you don't need to have a marble counter or a stainless steel fridge or five bathrooms. You know, you could just build an efficiency suite that would accommodate people to actually be able to live. And so I'm not a builder, um, and I hear two hundred sixty dollars a square foot. And I understand what eight by eight is the smallest bedroom, so there's different things you could do, but um, it just.
So the planning commission could certainly keep the code as it's been drafted. The, you, you got the staff recommendation, you also have some alternatives, which we've heard a lot from the planning commission in the past about ownership opportunities as well. Um, and that could also be the potential, I'll say, middle ground be- between the affordable housing requirement and. Not having it is that we could also say, well, you know, you need to allow for some ownership opportunities. Um, you know, so it's not all just market rate, it's all just rented, that you can maybe do some townhomes or some condos. So those are some other options as well that could be considered.
So I don't know how the rest of it, the commission feels, but I like the alternative where we're not changing the draft language. But we're creating those pathways to ownership. I think that's a really innovative way to deal with it and it addresses, I mean, what Kirian said is very valid, it really is. But let's get, so let's do this. Thumbs up, thumbs down and no changes at all.
Can I, can I ask a question first?
Yeah.
So I, I completely understand what Kirian's saying, but what I think I hear is. No, aren't enough people taking up the, the multifamily tax exemption, so we're not getting the affordable housing. I don't know if necessarily neighborhood commercial districts is the niche that we want to correct that problem, but maybe is this a bigger problem where we need to get. You know, some, either more incentives or some other kind of sweeping something where. It isn't just this optional tax exemption that you can take that they choose not to take because it's not profitable enough for them to do it. Um, I think there are multiple elements for affordable housing. One is simply, you know, how many units there are. If there are more units and, you know, people can't rent them out, then they're gonna reduce the rates and they become more affordable. But when, um, and ownership is one we've talked about, but I do think we need to, yeah, we build a unit with, for my countertops, you know. It's my first house, my first two houses had that and that's fine, people can live off that, they don't need granite, they don't need wood floors. Uh, they just want something clean and nice and functional. So maybe is this something where we need to get a little more diligent and I don't know if it's a planning issue or not, but I think it would be us. But we need to get a little more additional, uh, diligent about getting more people to take advantage of these multifamily tax exemptions. So we do get a larger quantity of affordable housing. I don't know if neighborhood commercial is the niche. It's not big enough and it's not gonna make enough a difference. I know you gotta start someplace though, and so, I don't know.
So the multifamily tax exemption is something that has to be designated by the city council for this area or this zone.
I have some input on that too. Personally, I think the multifamily tax exemption is extremely flawed and needs to be completely rewritten. Because right now it incentivizes for-profit developments and that's why developers are taking the eight years to the twelve year that includes affordability. Because it's too sweet for them to take the eight years and then ignore those four years of tax rebates that they would get. It's not being offset by the loss in rents and profitability that they would get from taking the eight-year program. So I think that's a more systemic level problem that absolutely the council needs to be on. I know that they're really serious about it. Um, so I'd be interested in to hear more about their vision for that pathway forward. And I think that's gotta be citywide, because I agree with you. Um, I don't want people isolated to certain quarters. This is something as a former employer I struggled with. None of my employees live within thirty miles of the city. And they're making fifty to sixty grand and they can't afford to rent in the city and that's a problem. You know, so if we, we're not building a community if everybody has to leave. Um, but that's a bigger macro level, level issue. And to Daphne's point, I think that. Um, these are too small to accommodate that kind of macro level change we need to see. Um, all that to say, I'm fine leaving it in there, but I think if we're gonna be moving to a more standardized process. Where we're taking the intense to one document, where we're like back linking everything to a master document and then. Having things as trim as possible and directly to the point. I, I'm fine with excising that language from here as long as I want it revisited. And I want it incorporated in all future thought as we move forward. I'm just not convinced that it needs to be duplicated here. Um, or if, one of the things I wanna make sure is that it is captured, so if it is duplicated here, that it be removed. Later, when it is transferred to the correct spot where it is in the overarching document that is covering it. Does that make sense?
Well, and I think this, the council has clearly stated that is something they definitely want to pass. So what, so, so the first thing I wanna do with this particular element, we've got three options in front of us that are presented. Um, just thumbs up, thumbs down. So the first recommendation or, or the first option would be. Don't remove the language with no other changes. So thumbs up or thumbs down for that?
So that would be keeping the affordable requirement.
Affordable.
As drafted.
And the second option. Is to remove the affordability requirements and let that be dealt with with comprehensive plan law. Is there thumbs up for that?
But I say it really needs to be dealt with and I, I think we need to be much more proactive on this and, and. You know, I've been in the planning mission a long time, I think we, we need to, you know, really put on the gas on some of this stuff because. We're losing it if, if, if it goes the way I'm, I'm suggesting or I'm, I'm voting, I guess. We're losing an opportunity to do that and that, that rubs me wrong because we gotta take every opportunity we can get. So I appreciate where Kirian's at, because you've, you've sometimes had to start a small spot, but I, but I think we need to get stronger on it. Just in, just putting up another multifamily apartment complex with rents too high for most people to live in is not, is not solving the problem. It's, it's not even getting close to solving the problem and it's making, I, I don't think it's helping hardly at all.
Yeah, I agree with that. And that's why, why I think the amendment from city council is so important. The third option here is to keep the affordability in the language. And create pathways to residential ownership. Is there thumbs up for that?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not sure what that would look like, though. I don't know what that would look like.
A neighborhood commercial district.
Those are two separate alternatives.
Okay.
So I took it as option. Alright, so we've already, we've already got, Jordy's saying no changes to the affordability language. Do we wanna add create pathways to residential ownership?
In this doc, in this code?
In this code.
I still don't know how we do that.
How do you do that?
I, I don't, I think that's a more broader city issue.
I really, I, I really think that it is a broader city issue and I, I actually was. Very disturbed by some of the comments that were made, as if you can only pay thirteen hundred twenty dollars a month. You are a lesser person than other people who live in this neighborhood. Those need to go to the city council.
Yes.
We are creating a divided community by not addressing these problems.
And if we bought a house here seventeen years ago, that's probably our mortgage that we're paying anyway.
That's right. But you, but we, but the city council needs to hear the lang- I was, it's disgusting, some of the language that came back to us. These people are not worthy to live in my neighborhood. Give me a break.
Right. Where's the, where's?
Yep.
Okay, no change in the language.
No changes, alright. Moving, moving along. Um, the next comment had to do with live-work allowances. Uh, and um, I'm gonna have to refresh my memory here a little bit. Um, yeah, so it was asking about uh an increased uh allowances for live-work spaces within these districts. Uh, and I think this might have been a confusion question as much as a request, so there's no cap on how much live-work you can use. The only cap that exists related to live-work is how much of that can be counted towards the commercial requirement within these districts.
So we're talking about something similar to, uh, what's the name of the practice that just got built on?
Surroundity. Surroundity.
Yeah, something like that, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so live-work units definitely allowed. Uh, there's no maximum cap on how many can be constructed. Provided they meet all the other design requirements. The only limitation is that we don't want all of the commercial requirement to be made up. Of live-work. We want there to be a more of an anchor style tenant, uh, more of a primary kind of. General style commercials type use that brings the activity center to those locations. And then would actually further support the live-work style type of uses. So that's kind of the clarity language that we're getting at there. So from a, yeah, from that, from that element, uh, no changes. But we did wanna actually, in review of that code, we did wanna add uh some additional language as far as the height requirement of those ground floor uses. Uh, and that really gets at that future kind of flexibility and being adaptable to future uses that we're not able to predict right now. So, uh, the staff recommendation is keep the live-work requirement the same as far as how much can be counted towards commercial. But then also add a requirement of minimum of fifteen feet uh to properties, uh, ground floor properties. Um, to accommodate proposed, but then also future commercial uses. So and when you're adding all of the potential HVAC, uh, sprinkler systems, all of those requirements that are attached to a lot of commercial uses. Um, if they're purely built for live-work, they might have a shorter ground floor elevation, which wouldn't necessarily accommodate those. So it really puts that future use that we're not able to predict in a.
Forcing a more commercial footprint, even if it is live-work.
So it's not, yeah, so it's not creating an environment where they're calling it live-work to get it approved and then retrofitting it back to residential once they get it through. So some language in there that really supports that commercial component of that live-work is what the recommendation is.
That, that's good, I like that. What is the, what is the requirement on, or how much live-work can be counted towards the commercial requirements? What, what is that in the code? I don't.
So it's five thousand square feet. So of the minimum fifteen thousand required, only five thousand of that can be accomplished through the live-work. That's not to say that you can't build more, but you can't just get more credit for the live-work component of the commercial.
Okay.
So.
That's.
Everybody good with that recommendation?
Yeah, I like, I like that change.
Alright, uh, building footprint, footprint clarity. This was basically a request just to include the word individual. That was the intent of the language, but it sounds like we weren't quite clear enough. So this is just being a little bit more specific uh within the code, but we're talking about uh floor plant. Ow, losing my language here. Um, uh, footprint requirements. Uh, so just adding that we're talking about individual buildings when we're talking about those footprint requirements and not over the entirety of the site. So clarity there, um, doesn't change really what we're trying to accomplish. Any, any thoughts on that one?
Everybody good with that?
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Um, next one has to do with increased uh square footage of building types, so residential, commercial and mixed use. So in our current code, we have two different building sizes. One is for a single use and one is for a multi-use. Uh, the single use is ten thousand square feet and the multi-use is forty thousand square feet. Uh, through this process, we looked at a lot of different building masses. We looked at some examples of what a forty, forty thousand square foot building looks like. We also looked at some of the smaller, uh, maybe like a bookstore, bakery, the types of uses that were being requested in these districts. And looked at the scale of what those are actually taking up, so. And we came to the conclusion that instead of just having a single use or multi-use, that there's a lot more different types of building combinations that exist out there. So that, uh, the recommendation was that our code should be a little bit more responsive to different types of building masses. Uh, so we broke it out into multi-commercial use, residential and mixed use. Um, and then provided ground, or not ground floor, but footprint requirements for each of those. And then also gross floor area requirements for each of those. The intent behind that was really to create more of a human scale. Uh, more kind of interactive, walkable districts. And we pulled a lot of those examples, both from local examples that we've seen within the community, but then also we looked at a lot of those example districts. Uh, that were identified within the outreach that we did by the community, looked at consistent kind of themes within those districts. To provide some code examples of what that could look like. Uh, we received comments back, um. In response to those districts that we rolled out, um, the, the staff recommendations here uh for multi-commercial uses. So that's different commercial uses without any residential, so we're defining each one of these a little bit different, so just keep that in mind. Um, the graph has eight thousand five hundred, the currently adopted code has ten thousand square, or actually forty thousand square feet. I should say for multi-commercial. Um, so the recommendation right now is to bump that eight thousand five hundred up to ten thousand. Which is still actually the size of what a single use is currently allowed to do within these districts. Um, and given these are multi-uses, we do have single use requirements that are much smaller than these to keep in mind. So if it's a single restaurant without any other connected uses attached to it, then that has a different designation that we weren't recommending a change to.
Would you help me conceptualize what cha- what this change is going to do? Like what is that going to look like in a building?
I don't know if you'd be able to tell the difference.
Um, frankly.
At right now, I'm trying to visualize the protocol here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so many, those slides of.
Is it from, I, I know that this was one of the comments provided by developers, so clearly they're biased. What, what gain does this give them? What does this effect possibly have on the district itself? Is it gonna change? Like, if it's not a significant change in the aesthetics or the purpose and it helps that and the. I don't see a downside to it. Is there any that I'm missing?
So I believe where the comments, the developers were coming from, so if we're requiring fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space. It's easier to put that in one building than having to break that out over multiple buildings. So that's where one of those comments is coming from. Uh, and then on the residential side, more square footage means more units per building. Uh, again, so it's, it's, it's a kind of a, an economy of scale, if you will. Um, yeah, and, and. Yeah, we, we, we ran through a, a range of different example sized buildings that, to kind of conceptualize that. I don't have any great examples of anything between an eight thousand five hundred and a ten thousand square feet. Um.
Is the five acres, uh, for districts greater than five acres, was that an add or was?
So that was, this is coming from, this comment is coming from the Forty-first and Marvin location. That is the only neighborhood commercial districts that is above that.
Gotcha.
So all of the other ones could join this language and we could just have one designation or we could have different designations for above or below. And the thought process there is that, again, it's hard to create one set of codes that's perfectly aligned with every district. So this is when you have a bigger district and more space to cover, that maybe those building sizes could be a little bit bigger. And you still capture a lot of the district kind of experience of, of the intent of these districts. If that made sense. Might be muddy and things up here, but yeah.
Because this comes from the developer, which was a a very different voice than the rest of the comments that we heard. Is there any unintended consequence that they are calculating that we are not anticipating? Are they creating something that would really undermine any other responsible development here? It seems very, I I'm just a little skeptical because what you're pointing out, it's like, oh, it's harm, it feels like a Trojan horse in a way.
Direct change, because it only affects them, so there's clearly a plan in place.
There's a Trojan horse somewhere.
Curious as to what is the benefit to them and.
It's profit, isn't it?
Yeah, and it's also recognition that a six acre acre site is going to be able to accomplish and build out at a different scale than a a one acre or even a half acre site. So.
Yeah.
That it's getting at that, so there's there's a couple of different routes that we could go here, uh one is no changes, one is responsive to those larger neighborhood commercial districts. Or uh some other combination of them, that feels right.
So I'm gonna. I'm gonna twist it up a little bit.
I will say that they did ask for larger square footages than what we're proposing, uh so this is already a reduction from what was being requested.
So I'm gonna twist it up a little bit here, so we just have the one site that is larger than five acres. And that's the site that everybody's concerned about the trees. If we increase the maximum building allowed, we're actually allowing more trees to be cut.
Well, there is buildable surface requirements of fifty percent for, and then impervious can't exceed eighty percent.
You're right, but still.
Eighty percent.
I'm just concerned this could put them over some threshold that we're not counting.
Yeah.
And and if it seems like such a little thing, there's something more there, sorry to be the suspicious one in the bunch, but.
Well, you you have to remember the commercial developers know what is profitable and they know what isn't, so you know, you've got five acres. You have to, that's an extreme, e- expensive piece of property that you have to justify the cost, whatever you put in there.
And from we he- what we heard though, we're okay on a lot of counts, just, you know, not become profitable for someone.
My thing, if we had four or five developers come in and make that same comment. Okay, now now it's a compelling thing, we've got one who obviously has a project in mind.
I'm trying to visualize ten thousand square feet, is that like a third of an acre, I don't.
Do you suggest, I think the tree subject needs some conversation and I don't think to your timetable, that's a ten minute conversation.
I will say that we do have those street conversations that are in the future, so as part of this document.
Yeah, cuz I I think it's a great point with the trees and I think we need to talk about the trees, we're getting that on everything.
So are you wanting to.
You also get into property rights.
Conversation right now and pick it up on April ten?
That's what I would suggest, because I think you made a good comment connecting this to trees and I would like to have some conversation about trees and. I think, I think I could take more than ten minutes just myself.
That sounded like a motion to table until April ten.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, it did, that was a motion.
A second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to table conversation until our April ten meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I hope you can make it April ten.
Well, I just know I wanna talk about.
Candy for the road, candy for the road. Anyone need a sweet tooth after that?